It is now 7:00 PM and I'm reconvening to open session and calling to order the regular Board of Education meeting for Indian Prairie District 204 on Monday, March 14th, 2022. Jeannie, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Jane. Ms. Donahue.
Here.
Ms. Grover.
Present.
Ms. Demming.
Present.
Mr. Rising. Mr. Carubis.
Here.
Ms. Fazdik.
Here.
We have a quorum. Ms. Demming, will you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
(Inaudible) of the United States of America, and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, and under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We will have a special workshop, board workshop meeting, executive session only, next Monday, March 21st, and our next regular board meeting will be held on Monday, April 4th. We have four board salutes today. I'll start with Ms. Jane.
The Board salutes Matia Valley Media on being selected as a 2022 Online Pacemaker finalist by the National Scholastic Press Association. As one of only 47 finalists from across the country, and one of only four in Illinois, this recognition is a testament to the students' hard work and dedication to their mission to tell the stories of Matia Valley. This is the fifth time Mustang Journalism students have been nominated as Pacemaker finalists. Congratulations to all involved.
The Board salutes the STEPS Eagles athletes and coaches who recently participated in the Illinois High School Association Special Olympics Illinois State Unified Basketball Tournament. Special Olympics Unified Sports is a fast-growing initiative that brings people with and without disabilities together on the same team to compete. The Eagles took first place in the Division VI State Basketball Tournament, and the coaches and the players did a great job. Congratulations to all!
Students head to DECA National Competition. Congratulations to the District 204 students who recently participated in the state DECA competition. DECA, which is Distributed Education Clubs of America, is an association of marketing students that encourages the development of business and leadership skills through academic conferences and competitions. Fifteen students from Niqua Valley, nineteen students from Matia Valley, and thirteen students from Wobonzie are moving on to the national DECA competition taking place in Atlanta next month. Good luck to all the students and their advisors at Nationals.
Warriors Hockey Club captures second consecutive state title. The Board salutes the Warriors Hockey Club, which consists of players from Wobonzie and Matia Valley High Schools, for capturing their second consecutive state title for the Combined Blackhawk Cup. The Warriors won by a score of 4-3 over Wheaton West. Congratulations on this stellar accomplishment.
Next, we have our Student Representative Report by Nitha Mullapudi from Wobonzie Valley High School.
My name is Nithya Mullapudi, and I am a senior at Wobonzie Valley High School, as well as the IPSD Board of Education Student Representative. It is truly an honor to be able to speak before everyone today. Recently, the Mr. WVHS competition took place this past Tuesday. Seven senior guys were competing for the title by showcasing their dance moves, talents, and runway walks with a side of Q&amp;A questions. Great job to all the boys, but special mention to runner-up TJ Sandag and the Mr. WVHS for 2022, Ryan Skurnak. Additionally, I had the privilege of being one of the emcees for the event, and it was an absolutely amazing experience. More importantly, watching the show the past three years and finally being able to run it as a senior as the end of the school year approaches was a full-circle moment for me, as well as the rest of the guys and emcees. Ryan also sang the National Anthem to kick off the boys' basketball IHSA Basketball Championship Game. Great job. We are so proud of you. Also, congratulations to Jais Navrajesh, who is a Coca-Cola Scholar for 2022. Your hard work and dedication is very appreciated, and we are so extremely proud of you. Congratulations. This past Friday, the Indian Student Association held their annual BTI event. Students from all three high schools and other nearby schools even participated, and Wobonzie is very proud to have hosted this event. Congratulations to all the three groups who placed in the top three and all the students who participated. You all did a great job, and we are so proud of you. After a grueling five-meet season in the North Suburban Math League, the Warriors' math team came out on top in the Cook Division, bringing home hardware in all five categories. Phenomenal job, Warriors. Congratulations to all 26 WVHS DECA members who competed this past weekend at the state conference. Those members placing in the top three qualify for competition at the International Conference in Atlanta, April 2022 to '27, and this year, we had eight. Congratulations to the WVHS Robotics Team 8780A, who qualified for the VEX World Championships. Team members battled hard all year and are our first WVHS Robotics Team to qualify for Worlds. Awesome job, Warriors. Our Special Olympics Swim Team had a great performance on Thursday, March 10th, in the swim meet at Matia Valley. Our team brought home five gold medals. Great work, Warriors, and thanks to coaches and our peer partners from the girls' swim team. Your help made a huge impact on our results. Huge congrats to the Dub V Show Choirs on their performances at the Chicagoland Showcase. Resonance won second runner-up with best treble soloist in show, Chloe Roxas. Soundcheck won third runner-up in their division. They also performed in the Chloro Classic held at Wheaton Warrenville South this past weekend. They placed sixth overall. Congratulations and great job, Warriors. The Dub V Scholastic Bowl Team won the regional tournament on Monday evening. The team will move on to sectionals at Naperville North. Two Wobonzie Valley BPA students campaigned for officer positions and were elected as state officers for the 2022-23 year. Stella Sanders will serve as a 2022-23 VP of State Newsletter, and Risa Mohapothra will serve as the 2022-23 Illinois BPA State President. Congratulations to both Stella and Risa on a successful campaign and election victory. Wobonzie Valley High School Band Boosters 15th Annual Craft Fair and Vendor Show is back. Held at Wobonzie Valley High School on Saturday, March 19th, 2022, at 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM, food, raffles, and shopping. Admission is $2 and $1 for students, with all proceeds benefiting the band boosters. Thanks for all your support. The Warriors took on Wheaton West for the Illinois State Hockey Championship. They won the combined state championship 4-3 over Wheaton West. We are so proud of them, and especially our seniors. Congratulations on a fantastic season, Warriors. Finally, congratulations to both the girls' and boys' water polo teams on their recent wins in their season. The boys' team won the Buffalo Grove Boys Varsity Water Polo Tournament. Seniors way to lead and excellent job. That is all for the IPSD Board of Education School Board Report from Wobonzie Valley for the date of March 14th, 2022. My name is Nithya Mullapudi. It was a pleasure to speak to you all tonight. I hope everything else runs smoothly, and as always, go Warriors. Thank you.
It is now time for public comment. Sixty minutes is allowed for public comment, and each person is limited to three minutes. When addressing the board, we ask that you respect the confidentiality and safety of our students and school district personnel. We also ask that those addressing the board be cognizant that this is an open meeting and is available to all age groups, and as such, ask that you consider who the audience members are this evening and keep comments age-appropriate. Public comment represents the voice and opinion of the speaker. There will be no feedback from the board members during the meeting, but follow-up will be provided by an administrator as appropriate. So we only have one speaker tonight, and it is Robert Shantz.
Good evening, Board of Education. Dr. Tally. First, congratulations to the STEPS team on their title. Good job. Because we couldn't get anywhere via email or talking to people, I'm here with requesting officially the transfer of my son to Granger Middle School. He's coming from the STEM school, and he's supposed to go to Fisher, but we want him to go to Granger, and it's our right to do so. Paul is on the 99th percentile in math, according to the AIMS Web test, 96th percentile in ELA, but mentally, he's extremely struggling with the transition away from the way he has been learning and thriving at the STEM school over the last three years, and away from his friends. In a parent meeting in November, Granger was introduced as the flagship and like a pilot almost in regards to STEM, like the project-based education, and as such, as it is my right, I'm requesting the transition to the school. We are being told that Fisher is a great school, which it is. My daughter went through it, but her experience was not all positive. Fisher has a 32% math pass rate, which is below the state average of 33%, as opposed to Granger, who is at 52%. Teacher-to-student ratio is at 14.8 at Granger and 15.1 at Fisher, so the capacity cannot be an issue. Another family requested the same thing via phone and was granted the request, yet when we asked for it, we were told there's supposed to be a form that is one inaccessible on the website right now. It leads to an error, and second was only supposed to become available in April, and my question is, why are we being treated differently? To me, that's discrimination and unacceptable. It seems like delay and deceive again. The STEM school transition seems like a déjà vu to me. Last year in January, we were told, no, no, there's no closing of the STEM school, and yet in March or April, it was almost done. In November, we had a meeting with parents and administrators and teachers, and we were told there's going to be a transition plan, and we're going to make this all for the kids really great. We are going to remeet in December. We heard nothing. January, nothing. And then we get an email from Fisher saying, hey, please select your courses, and your son's going to attend. When my wife sent a really upset letter, we were told, oh, no, 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 the middle school jumped the gun. We're still working on our plans, yet a week later comes an email like, sorry, there are no plans.
Ms. Donahue, speaker's time has ended.
And we, you know, we're going to go all to their respective homeschools.
Thank you.
So, thank you.
We now move to the Consent Agenda and Superintendent Report. We'll start with the Superintendent Report.
Thank you, Ms. Donahue, members of the Board and the Indian Prairie community. On Friday night, many of us were able to attend the inaugural IPEF Inspired 22 fundraiser. It was a glorious evening of seeing our students perform and seeing their art displayed throughout the venue. Also, the artwork was up for auction. The event was a great opportunity to support IPEF, which supports our children in various ways. What a great inaugural event. Thanks to Ms. Alicia Johnson, Executive Director of IPEF, and Mr. Chad Stephens, Chair of IPEF, Ms. Heidi Holm, and to the whole IPEF team for imagining this event and seeing it happen. I also want to thank Mr. Grant Saar, Director of elective Curriculum, for helping to orchestrate the student performers from all three of our high schools, as well as organizing the gathering of the student art that was auctioned off. Bidding was strong that night for the student art, and unfortunately, I didn't win a single thing. But I'm okay about it. I am. March is Women in History Month. It is a month focused specifically on the contributions that women have made in our country and world. Our schools are in the process of celebrating the month with specific activities and programs in the schools. We are also in the process of working on our summer programs for this summer. Similar to last year, we will offer programs for elementary, middle, and high schools. We are working around the fact that we will have construction at our elementary schools to address the air conditioning issues. Therefore, space for summer school is at a premium. Nonetheless, we are working around these space issues to ensure we can have a program for our students. More information will come out soon. We have just learned that our district's Parent Education and Community Engagement, or PEAS of Mind, grant application has been tentatively approved. This is a grant for a total of $500,000 over the next two years, which will address gaps in opportunity and pandemic impact on interrupted learning by developing and expanding relationships between schools, community-based organizations, and mental health providers to benefit the well-being of students, families, and school staff. We'll be working with community providers and partners to help us provide services for students and parents. This grant will support local efforts to demonstrate, to develop comprehensive school systems grounded in mental health and trauma-informed practices. I want to thank Ms. Dawn Faulkner, our SEL Coordinator, Dr. Tara Bell, Instructional Specialist and Grant Coordinator, and Mr. Dougie Karius, Deputy Superintendent, for the work they did on this grant application. And before I turn my part of the meeting over, I would like the Board of Ed to approve two appointments that are in front of you tonight. I'm recommending that the Board of Ed approve Ms. Kimberly Wazinski as Assistant Director of Student Services effective July 1. She was replacing Ms. Amy Galvin, who is moving from the area. Ms. Wazinski is joining Indian Prairie from West Chicago School District 33, where she currently Director of Student Services. She has also worked as Assistant Principal, Director of Special Education, and a Special Education Coordinator. Now, it should be noted that Ms. Wazinski is coming back to Indian Prairie, where she used to work at Wobonzie Valley as a support facilitator. I'm also recommending that you approve Mr. John R. Robinson III as the new Director of Building Operations effective July 1. He is replacing Mr. Todd DePaul, who is retiring. Mr. Robinson is coming from Wheaton Warrenville District 200, where he is Director of Facilities. He has also worked at Geneva Community Unit School District, in addition to other positions with Nikor Gas and Johnson Controls. Ms. Donahue, back to you.
All right. I think we'll start with, I need a motion to approve John Robinson as Director of Building Operations as presented.
This is Natasha Grover. I move that the Board of Education approve John R. Robinson III as Director of Building Operations as presented.
Is there a second?
A second?
Any discussion? Jeannie, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Grover.
Yes.
Ms. Fazdik.
Yes.
Ms. Donahue.
Yes.
Ms. Jane.
Yes.
Mr. Carubis.
Yes.
Ms. Demming.
Aye.
The motion passes. Congratulations, Mr. Robinson, and we look forward to working with you. Next, I need a motion to approve Kimberly Wazinski as Assistant Director of Student Services as presented.
I move that the Board of Education approve Kimberly Wazinski as Assistant Director of Student Services as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Okay. Jeannie, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Grover.
Yes.
Ms. Demming.
Aye.
Mr. Carubis.
Yes.
Ms. Jane.
Yes.
Ms. Fazdik.
Yes.
Ms. Donahue.
Yes. The motion passes, and welcome back, Kimberly. Next, we move to our Consent Agenda items. Please identify yourself as you make your motion or second. I need a motion to approve Consent Agenda Items F through L.
This is Sapna Jain, and I move to approve Consent Agenda Items F through L.
Is there a second?
Second.
Jeannie, will you please, oh, any discussion? Okay. Jeannie, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Jane.
Yes.
Ms. Grover.
Yes.
Mr. Carubis.
Yes.
Ms. Demming.
Aye.
Ms. Donahue.
Yes.
Ms. Fazdik.
Yes.
The motion passes. All right. So next up is our discussion item, and we will have a presentation from students Nihya Tokala, Ayush Gupta, and Jindal Ju. Coming up here. Welcome. Are we missing one person?
Just the two of us for today.
Oh, okay. All right.
All right.
Welcome.
Thank you. So, hello, everyone. My name is Ayush Gupta, and I'm a senior at Wobonzie Valley High School.
And my name is Naya Tokala, and I'm a senior at Matia Valley High School.
So, to begin, I want to talk through what spurred this proposal. Over the course of the last two years, there have been many important decisions that affect students, but too often, student voice is not considered. Currently, the primary method for students to communicate with administration is through A, public comment, B, handpicked principal advisory councils, or C, cold emails, which is why, for the last 12 months, students from Matia, Niqua, and Wobonzie Valley High School have worked together and met with the school board, Assistant Superintendent, and school principals to develop a structural change to incorporate student voice into district policy.
After workshopping our proposal, we reached a compromise that would help connect both the school board and the students. The student committee will be composed of six students, one junior and one senior from each respective high school. The students will be meeting on a bi-weekly basis with input and attendance from two school board members once a month. This time will be primarily spent towards discussing important district events from school board meetings and workshopping new ideas to introduce to the school board.
These students will all be democratically elected by their peers through a secure election process. Students will have an opportunity to start campaigning two weeks after second semester begins until elections in spring. This gives the student body the opportunity to elect student leaders who they believe will best represent them.
However, for our first year, we believed it was best to choose appointees in the interest of creating a process before elections in the 2022 and 2023 school year. They will be chosen in a uniform process, as Google Forms to each respective school will be sent out on April 1st, and the decision then will be made alongside seniors and advisors from each respective high school.
This brings us to how will the committee function moving forward? The committee's purpose is to allow students to directly work with school board members to brainstorm, research, and create policy that would benefit everyone at the district. Students are expected to meet weekly, similar to other school clubs, and all meetings will be held at the Kraus Education Center to ensure a consistent meeting space.
Before we conclude our presentation, we want to recognize some key members who allowed this proposal to be what it is today. Thank you to Dr. Howard for being so receptive and available for us throughout the process. Mr. Carubis and Mrs. Fazdik for their input and suggestions along the way. The class of 2021 for helping us create this proposal. And finally, our advisors, Mrs. Fuhrer, Mr. Wolak, and Mrs. Tufo, for taking their time to get us on the topic we were so passionate about. Thank you all for listening. Are there any questions as we conclude?
Okay. Let's start with Ms. Grover.
I don't really have any questions. I'm really excited about this. I spoke to your predecessors last year when they were kind of thinking about it, and your teacher leader and the students, and trying to figure out how to do it. So it's great to see the proposal now and see the end result, and just looking forward to having your voice. I think it's important, so kudos to you.
Thank you, Mrs. Grover, for your enthusiasm.
Ms. Demming.
I have to echo Mrs. Grover. I am just very, very impressed with the continued request and continued persistence to say, we want to make sure that we're heard. So, really, really appreciate your willingness to kind of give us a little breadth this year, since there are so many things on the plate, but thank you for your persistence. Looking forward to seeing how we have your input and work together in the future. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Demming.
Ms. Jane.
It's going to sound like a record. I'm really going to echo what my fellow board members stated. I got to see some of your proposals that Board Member Carubis and Fazdik sent and shared with us, and it was so detailed and so thoughtful, and we were all very impressed. And I'm glad that we're now at a space that we feel like we can make this happen. So congratulations on your persistence, and I really look forward to hearing your voices with the issues that come forth in the coming months. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jane.
Mr. Carubis.
To the students, what are the first issues you're going to bring before the board? Have you landed on a couple yet?
So, there's been a few that we've thought about. The first is representation, not only among our students, but our staff as well. And another issue that Wobonzie Valley is particularly enthusiastic about is school start times. We want to make sure students are provided the adequate ability to learn and function at schools.
But at this moment, we're still workshopping ideas and trying to determine who our permanent council will be, so we're taking the time to set the foundation before we pursue any new ideas or initiatives.
And we have two board members that have been involved in this process, but I want to open it up that two other board members can be involved in these meetings. We can do a rotation, so it doesn't just have two of the same board members involved, because I think it would be great for the students and the board to be involved in this process as it develops.
I completely agree, Mr. Carubis. While we've enjoyed Mrs. Fazdik's and your input greatly, it would also be lovely to hear some words from the other school board members as well. But thank you so much, though. You've contributed thus far.
Nothing further. Thank you. Well done.
Ms. Fazdik.
First, thank you. I'm going to echo some of the things I was able to share at our last meeting, but I think it's important that everyone be able to hear this, too. All of the students working on this committee, but especially the leaders, have demonstrated an enormous degree of professionalism that just makes me super excited about the students in our district and about what you're doing. You are filling a missing piece here, right? Well, we're here, we're all here, for the students. So having an opportunity to create a platform to make sure that we're including student voice and that we're hearing student voice, I think, is critical. So, thank you for doing that. Thank you for your persistence and your patience, and thank you for your creativity and understanding here. I love the collaboration with the teachers who have, you know, given so much time because they believe in it, too. They're excited to work with the students. For the students who are giving in their time, I feel super lucky and privileged, so you were very gracious to say that it's been okay to work with me. But I do agree that it would be really, I guess I have to share with everyone else, too, the privilege of being able to work with our amazing students. So I wholeheartedly support some kind of rotation so that you get all the perspectives, and we all get to enjoy watching you grow this new and exciting thing. So, thank you.
On behalf of the students, Mrs. Fazdik, I can assure you, we are more than okay with your work on the proposal, and we really appreciate your dedication to helping the students along the way.
So I'm going to echo what others have said. So I know this has been a long journey. So I'm going to echo what others have said. So I know this has been a long journey for you. Ms. Deming and I, well, all of us, Ms. Fazdik, Ms. Jane, that were running for election this past spring, recall, one of the first forums was on the student forum and being asked and followed up on after, and I believe that forum was like early February maybe, yeah.
It was one of the first ones.
Yeah. And being asked about our opinion on student voice and you heard strong feedback from all of us that this is an important thing for us. But I also know that it's gone through many twists and turns and probably was very frustrating at times for you, but that's the reality of life, honestly. But we all really do want to make sure that the student voice is heard. I love this proposal. I think I saw lots of heads nodding on the concept of rotating the board members at your meetings. So once you set up your meetings and calendar, we can coordinate that with the board. You know, as Ms. Fazdik said, we're here for the students, for the parents, for the faculty. We want to make sure that we are representing what we're hearing in the community and we do strive to interact and hear more of that. Personally, each one of us looks for opportunities to be at different events or activities. So this will just be a very organized way of collecting information for us. So I thank you all for putting up with the sometimes drama that was going around with the, the school board and activities that we are involved with. And, you know, sometimes things seem very simple from the outside, but when you look under the covers, they're extremely complex. So, so welcome to the future of interacting more with us. And I thank you very much again for your persistence, as everyone else said, and for this great proposal. So thank you. Look forward to having it implemented.
Thank you, Ms. Donahue. I can speak on behalf of all the students who've worked on the committee that this has truly been a valuable and positive experience for us and we hope that this will lead to more of a collaborative effort between the school board and the students in the future.
So thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, our next presentation is Dr. Christina Cipiel, Sally Osborne and Kim Maloney will now present the Student Services Update.
I will just say that Ms. Osborne will not be in tonight. She threw her back out and needs to be held.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to present to our annual update on the work of the Student Services Department. Tonight's presentation aligns with Board Policy 6:120, which is the education of children with disabilities. As Dr. Tally just said, Sally Osborne won't be with us tonight, but I do have Kim Maloney to present the wonderful works our STEPS program and young adults are, are doing. The purpose of tonight's presentation is to update the board and community on the supports available for learners with diverse needs, to report on the purpose and vision of the Student Services Department and to identify future goals and next steps. The next two slides give you a high level overview of some of the data in the Student Services Department. As of December 2021, which we're always a year behind in our child count, we have just a little over 3,000 special education students. That, that does not include our students with Section 504 plans. That's just our IEP students. Preschool is a fluid number, but right now, as of the time of the development of the presentation, was 634 students. Our young adults are at 92 right now. That might be, again, a fluid number. Out of district students is 97, so those are students that we were unable to support with the structures within our buildings and they're in private therapeutic day schools. And then residentially, we have six students. Our most common and most frequently served students are those with a specific learning disability that represents about 23%. Our next category of disability is autism, which is at 19, and other health impaired, which is 16%. So other health impaired would include students with, as an example, asthma, peanut allergies, diabetes, some other medical situations, ADHD. So that's kind of an all encompassing. Our two services that are accessed most frequently are the speech-language services and our social work. And our special education students make up 11% of all District 204 students. Our state average is at 15% and our national norm is at 14, so we are below that. Demographically, white students make up 39%, Asian 19, Hispanic 18 and African-American students 17. And then, again, at the time, this is, this is fluid requests for due process. We had one state board complaint that we were able to resolve collaboratively with the parent. So the Student Services Department is funded primarily through the IDEA grant. We do have a budget through the district, but we like to operate within the IDEA grant if we can for most of our costs and expenses. We do fund 100 teacher assistants and that accounts for both their salary and their benefits. We fund the assistive technology, the devices that students may need to communicate, including adaptations to the Chromebooks that they already have issued through the district. We have specialized equipment and supplies for our special populations and related services. So anything that, let's say, our OTs or our PTs, our speech-language pathologists need as far as specialized equipment, we fund that. We do fund all the evaluation protocols for students that we're evaluating through the process. We have that at 95,000. We have gone to Q Global, which is a system where the student gets an iPad and the evaluator gets an iPad and that allowed us actually to evaluate students during the pandemic because we were able to maintain that distancing and it's, it's interactive that way instead of just all pencil paper. We do have specialized curriculum for our students that can't access the generalized curriculum even with modifications. LLI is leveled literacy intervention. Spire is our phonics program. TeachTown is used at the STEPS program and I can have Kim talk about that. And we have TouchMath. And TouchMath is our most recent acquisition and that goes first grade all the way through high school. TouchMath used to be just an intervention and now it's a standards-based and aligned curriculum. And then we do fund the professional development for our staff as well as bringing speakers in for such things as Institute Day. The department itself is myself and one elementary director who has three assistant directors under her. They each have seven buildings, so that accounts for the 21 elementary buildings. We have one middle school director. She has three of the middle schools and the Burkett Freshman Center. Under her, there's an assistant director who takes the other four middle schools. And then we have one high school director that covers all of our high schools. We have principals at preschool, again, that's Sally Osborne, Wheatland, which is Latonya Harris, and STEPS, Kim. We also have within the department seven district support team. We're full of acronyms, so it's DST members and they are all board-certified behavior analysts. Their job is to go around the, the district, anywhere from preschool all the way through STEPS and on a referral basis, give support to the teachers to build capacity. They're not a service directly to the student. They're capacity building because we have seven of them and, you know, 33 sites. So they are busy people. They are assigned to certain, to certain areas of our programming that that is their personal passion. For some, it's autism. For some, it's students with behavioral challenges and that, that fits nicely. They also do a lot of professional development for our staff. We also have two district support team members that are exclusively for assistive technology. So when a student gets a device, they train the parents, they train the staff, they make sure that it's working, that the student knows how to work it. It's, that's very comprehensive. And then we have our speech-language pathologist, our occupational and physical therapist, our social workers, our psychologist and the nursing department all fall within Student Services. We also have RAP support and what RAP support is, is a licensed clinical social worker who is on a referral basis. We refer with the parent's permission. The, the social worker goes out to the school. She does a one-hour observation of the student and then she meets with the parent and they talk about internal structures at home that would make there to be better continuity between home and school. She's not a respite provider. She doesn't give service to the student. She gives service for capacity building to the parent. And we've had, and we have numbers on her efforts later in the, in the presentation. We also have two out-of-district coordinators. So we have a little under 100 students placed outside of the district. So we have two coordinators, both, both on a part-time basis. Excuse me. Thank you. And they conduct all the IEP meetings, they connect with the, with the parents and they handle all the transportation for the students. So the purpose of the department is to collaborate at the building level to problem solve for students who are struggling. So to make sure that perhaps some of our, our response to intervention levels are working and that we're able to do problem solving before a student might get to need special education. If there are questions about legal compliance and new procedures, our Student Service Department administrators are there to assist and also to assist with IEP meetings, especially those who, in which there's some level of conflict. Our vision is to support students, staff and parents that maximize their time in general education. We are an inclusive district and there's a lot of pride in that and so we want to make sure we continue with that vision. We also don't want to forget the almost 100 students who aren't in our district right now and to support their needs and to make sure that we're always having the conversation of when they can come back, when it's appropriate to do so. So the supports that we have added throughout several years has been our BCBA's, the Board Certified Behavior Analysts. We've gone from three FTE to seven and that's been a nice, because what we found was when we are moving to an out-of-district placement, it was usually because we didn't have the behavioral support. We'd like to get more proactive, so we've really increased in that area. We have purchased through the IDEA grant the targeted curriculum. And again, this is for students that are, they can't access the general ed curriculum even with modifications. They need something different. RAP this year has been thus far 16 families assisted and it's about 29 to 34 hours a month that our social worker spends on that. And then our professional development, we have offered over 200 offerings from 2019 to present. That's a combination of speakers that we've brought in. That's a combination of our BCBA's who will talk about behavior, our assistive technology, DST members. So it's both in-house and out-of-house. We do have uniform procedures in the form of manuals for both special education and Section 504. So there's consistency of practice there. We also have, we also worked with the union representatives, representatives for a workload plan and that's posted on the website. That's for any teacher that feels that their workload is, they need assistance with, feeling a little bit overwhelmed. And then we have the Paze Lab at STEPS and I think most of you have actually seen the Paze Lab. It's a wonderful thing and it was really nice to have during the pandemic when our students couldn't go out into the, the job force and practice their skills. They were able to practice it in the Paze Lab. So academically, just some numbers here. You can see that for our students at the K1 level in both early literacy and numeracy, their performance stayed statistically the same and did not experience a decline. So given, given what we've experienced as a whole community and elsewhere, we've, we feel that that's actually a gain in staying just, just the same. We hope to go farther, but for our students in the second through eighth grade levels in reading, there was a nice increase while our math scores stayed statistically the same and did not decline. And for our high school students in last spring's SAT, we saw no statistical difference in evidence-based reading and writing and in math, we saw the scores remain consistent with no decline. So I'm going to turn it over. I would be turning it over to Sally, but I am going to do my best here with her notes. So we serve students ages three to five. Three ways that students come into us at the preschool level. One, students who pay tuition. Two is students with IEPs and three, students enrolled through our grant program who are considered at risk for academic failure. This includes our students in preschool in our Title I classrooms as well as students who attend through the state-funded preschool for all grant. Our staff at the preschool separates us from other preschools in the community. Specifically, all of our teachers have professional educator licenses and are certified to teach early childhood general education, EC special education and English as a second language. We also have certified speech-language paths, psychologists, social workers and a school nurse to provide support to students at the preschool. And then we have our classified staff that, as Sally says, keeps our building running efficiently. Our teacher assistants, our RN and our secretaries. And finally, we have our non-bargaining staff, which is our OTs and PTs, occupational and physical therapy. So how do we serve? Ever since the development of the presentation, because our numbers are always very fluid, Sally said, actually, there are 15 and a half inclusion classrooms and that's a combination of students who pay tuition, students with IEPs and students who attend through our state grant program. The Title I classrooms service preschool students from our five elementary Title I buildings. And then we have seven and a half self-contained classrooms. There are smaller classrooms with students with IEPs. There's a smaller student-teacher ratio with a focus on direct instruction. We also have one bilingual classroom where Spanish is 90% and English is 10. And we also have a phonological classroom, which is serving students with significant articulation needs only. And then we have classrooms in five locations. We have the main campus downstairs. We have Graham Elementary School, Gambert, Longwood and McCarty. So what do we provide? High-quality developmental appropriate instruction. We're meeting all the needs of our students through a strength-based play approach to learning. The creative curriculum is a framework and is a research-based curriculum supported by the Illinois State Board of Education. And content-wise, there are seven units of study developed by a team of teachers and speech-language pathologists and that's aligned with the Illinois early learning and developmental standards. We also have social-emotional learning. We are piloting the second STEPS downstairs. And then the assessment of the teaching strategies, gold assessment is used three times a year and those reports are given to parents so that they're aware of their child's progress. Once every three years, we have a, a progress monitoring visit from the state board. This past year it was completed in two parts due to COVID. The preschool received the Gold Circle of Quality Rating, which is Gold Circle programs meet or exceed specific quality benchmarks on learning environment, instructional quality and all program administrative standards. Group size and staff-child ratios, staff qualifications and professional development are all taken into account in this monitoring visit. And you can see that they saw five classrooms and received a combined score of 5.14 and so it is to reflect developmentally appropriate practice and they, they passed. So why choose Prairie Children Preschool? The staff certification is of very high quality. You won't find the same qualification in a local preschool with all of the, the credentials that our staff have. They're using research-based curriculum and instruction. They're aligned with kindergarten standards. The range of special education programming is similar to what the students will receive at the elementary school. at the elementary school. So they have the full complement, for those that need it, of related services such as social work, speech, OT, PT. We do have very good articulation then to the elementary schools. When it's time for students to move on to kindergarten, uh, there are meetings, there are observations so that we place the students in a, a classroom that is appropriate to fit their needs and has enough support. And the quality of programming, I think, as a result of all of this is, as you can see, pretty, pretty much second to none and is, and is wonderful. So I'm going to hold the questions and let Kim.
All right. Here we go.
Take over.
All right. How lucky are we that it's St. Patrick's Week and a person named Maloney is trying to figure out the microphone here? So Jeannie, we're going to go a little old-school. It's going to probably be a little louder than what you guys are expecting in here. So, uh, welcome with, uh, with us. And this is what I want to talk to you about. Last year, I was a little nervous. This year, I'm going to go back to being myself. Christina gave me permission. So as a past English teacher, I like to dissect words. I like to really think about them. I like to associate them with, um, a vision of mine going forward. So I'm going to dissect the word lucky today. Tom Brady, Alex Caruso, Mitch Trubisky, the White Sox bullpen. In my eyes, they're all lucky, but they're not the luckiest people that I know. My step-staff and I are the luckiest people. I'm going to keep looking at here and I want to tell you why. Because when you're the luckiest people in the world, experiences cause you to be grateful. Tom Brady, he has the chance to do the unthinkable. And this has all changed in the last 24 hours of all these guys, so you know. All right? I can't redo my little script, Dr. Taylor, I apologize. He has the chance to be and do the unthinkable. Alex Caruso, he's an impactful, he's an impactful player. He's been gone seven weeks. The first time he steps on the court, amazing things happen for his team. Mitch Trubisky, if you don't know Mitch Trubisky, you're going to have to watch the Steelers this year. He has an opportunity, and that's the key word. He has an opportunity to reach goals and dreams and he can turn them into reality because someone believes in him enough to give him another shot. The White Sox bullpen, their pitching staff, joy. They're going to bring me so much joy because I have a bunch of Cub fans over here and it is going to be awesome. And I've been around 204 a long time, so I know some of you up there too. Love the Cubs. Unthinkable, impactful, opportunity, and joy. And that's why we're the luckiest people, because we're grateful for the journey that we're on with our community. We're a community leading the way. Tonight, you're going to see highlights of what we do, but we're much, much more. I can speak on behalf of my staff because they speak on behalf of me a lot. And they're grateful and I'm grateful for the journey we have with our families, our young adults, the administration in 204. We're grateful of our journey to model behaviors in doing the unthinkable and getting young people to believe they can do what others don't think is attainable. We love our journey where we teach how to set goals because we do that every day and we dream big. And they know that we wouldn't work together if they didn't and I didn't. We dream big. Our journey is solidified in finding and acting upon impactful moments. And our journey in providing and seeking out joyful experiences, it's top-notch in 204. Again, you're going to see some highlights, but I, I just want to send this out to everybody. We are so privy to have the young people in front of us that we do. And we're grateful for the teachers, the staff, the support people, everybody who invested in our young adults prior to them coming to us. We get to see them. I had, was walking in with him, Iry Coleman, and he's like, Ms. Maloney, I went to school in there, preschool. The preschool, I was so happy Sally was going to be here. And, uh, we're going to bring him Iry back. That is impactful. It's joyful. And it means so much more to our community than, uh, than some of the highlights you'll see. I, I just want you to know that we are grateful for everybody who invested in our young adults prior to them coming to STEPS. That is my biggest vocal point tonight, Christina. Let's do this. I've talked about in the past that students in disability in Naperville and Aurora, they stay in our community. They do great things. And you can see right now, the trend is we're having more students that are hired for paid employment. We have more students going to Project Search. Tonight, in my audience, I have two more students that are going to college and staying in the dorms and living there. One at Judson University and the other one at Iowa. What a great weekend for Iowa. What a great weekend to be a Hawkeye, right, Jack Costello? Where's my Judson University? Sign today, deliver today. Don't tell us we can't because we will. The STEPS program, uh, developed a different schedule through COVID and it was block scheduling and we stuck with it. This was something I remember last year. Ms. Demme, you asked, what are we going to stick with coming out of COVID? We stuck with block scheduling. We found out if we're in the classroom, we can do our pre. We can do our lesson. We can get out in the community. We can come back and we can do our post. We can do that all together at once. We found out we can spend more time out in the community. We can spend more time working soft skills. We have in-house and in-district work training opportunities. We are so fortunate, so fortunate in 204 that we are as large as we are and we're as accepting. What I have grown up with in 204 is what we do is we take large spaces and we shrink them for young people. And we make people feel valued and we invest. And we continue to do that at the STEPS program. We have 32 students that make and deliver ice packs for all of the nurses, 26 buildings. What you have to understand there is it's a schedule. You're clocking in. You're making the ice packs. Certain people are getting on a bus and delivering them. Eagle courier service, it's fantastic. We have a shredding program, not only in this building, but also in-house where the shredding is brought to us and we take care of that immediately. We were working on the district surveillance, surveillance kits through COVID, again, using our courier service, which when we did that, we networked and Kids Matter picked up on that we were doing deliveries. And now it's about bi-weekly. Uh, Kids Matter hires us and we deliver for them. We do a Todd DePaul Work Crew, we call it, which is in-house. I saw Todd downstairs today and, um, he's impactful and he will leave a legacy. And now we will make sure of that. And I have a few jokes. I've known Todd for a really, really long time, so, uh, I let the kids know exactly some of his, uh, secrets and the fun that he's had in 204. Christina talked a little bit about our PAYS Lab and some of you have come over. And I would invite not only you guys to come over and check it out, I would invite the community to come over and check it out. I think it's very important to understand what that practical assessment lab is. And it was great during COVID because Sharon Kickel and Jamie Zorris, my two vote coordinators, actually packed up kits. We would go out shopping. So students that weren't available to come into our building, they packed up black bags with all the activities in it, the charts, the timers, and sent them home to families so they could continue to work and progress. And what the PAYS Lab has, it's 155 practice opportunities for work sites and we have that in-house. Production, we make the lanyards a lot of you have. Our students set some cards out for you guys, thanking you for your service to our community. We make crayons, we make greeting cards, we make pens, we make dog toys, we make dog treats. We've got, I'm laughing because Sheri's in here and we've got now all kinds of different-shaped bones and products. It, it's great. And that's all done in-house. One of our things, Ashley Elder and Bailey Zidak are over my shoulder as well. And they started a micro-business, Eagle Tees, we're calling it. We have three-quarter zip-ups. We have T-shirts. I know that Wabonzi Valley Wrestling has just put in an order, um, for some of their shirts for next year. And, um, our students make all of them under the direction of Ashley and Bailey. It's phenomenal. And we used our IPEF grant money for the purchase of the equipment. I also want to thank Sharon Kickel, who has been so incredibly amazing when it comes to working side-by-side with me on this grant from the district or that the district, um, receives. When we first started working together on this, the grant total was $68,000 coming into 204. We've increased that by $74,000 because of programming, because of vocational programming. And her and Jamie Zorris, along with the high school vocational coordinators, have really worked together, um, putting this in place to benefit our district. And, and I want to give a super shout-out to them because it's not easy work. And, and when something's new to you, it, it makes it that much more challenging. It's been nothing but a team and collaborative effort. And again, it goes back to those, those four words. I gave Sharon the opportunity to help me, something that I needed help with. And, uh, is she just, she took it and she ran with it. And that's what the STEPS staff does for our students. There is a misprint on this slide because this morning, we had our 19th student start his paid employment through organic life. Yeah, that is pretty amazing. And, um, we also have a student who is in the Project Search program. We have four right now and four who have applied. And one of those students was just hired last week by Midwest Orthopedic, um, in their data entry clerical, um, administrative area. It, it's phenomenal. It's phenomenal. The next couple of slides, this first one shows new employers, people who have taken a chance and given us an opportunity and have been impactful to our community. And then the next slide is going to show loyal, um, businesses that continue to hire our Prior to November, right before the pause, we had six students going out to the community. A year ago, we had 12 students going out to the community. 55 students are currently going out into the community for job site training and many of them are sitting right over here and it's pretty phenomenal. That's a scheduling piece. That's Matt Shipley and Ron Johnson helping to provide transportation for our students to get to and from. That's our teaching assistants who went back and were white bus certified so they could transport our students to and from work. It is truly a community experience. And it's also preparation prior to coming to STEPS in the high schools of teaching skills on how to articulate and speak to your employer, how to speak to other staff members, what's the difference when you're out in the community to being in the building, um, working through some of those situations and scenarios. Work training site partners include the ones right over, President Donahue. Couple highlights, I talked a little bit about Kids Matter. I talked a little bit about our STEPS career service for deliveries within or outside of district boundaries. We've done monthly volunteer service at Feed My Serving Children. One of our staff members did a fundraiser for Hesit House and the homeless. We do our annual Toys for Tots holiday drive because service and giving is very important, not only to my staff, but to my young adults. We have community partnerships with the 95th Street Library. We have four classrooms that go once a week. We have four pathways that go to 515 Fitness. We have, I don't have the exact number, that attend the YMCA. 40. It would have to be somewhere between 37 and 40. Our new partnership is with Rocksteady Boxing Club. Again, don't tell us we can't because I have young people who, a lot of outside adults, will say, well, wait, we've got some balance things going on. We've got this, we've got that. And those are the parents and the community and the young people who want and have a desire to look for a dream and chase it. It's a great partnership. My last brag, my last brag, right here. We have three students that are enrolled in the College of DuPage. These numbers fluctuate year to year due to our, our population, our numbers. We have 92 currently right now. I have six families that, due to the pandemic, just not comfortable coming back yet. I have 126 students projected for next year, starting in the fall. Two STEPS Eagles are attending the university level currently, one at Wisconsin Whitewater, who was our first, another at Aurora University. Jack Costello will be attending the University of Iowa and Austin Clary will be going to Judson University. STEPS has four students in the Project Search program, which is an internship through the hospitals in the area. It's a year-long internship. And we have four Eagles that are currently applied to this program. It is my last brag. It just happens to go on two slides. So Christina made the joke at my last PTSA meeting, again, for like the fourth year in a row, that I always say, like, I give me three minutes. We can solve almost anything in three minutes. Let's chat. And Christina goes, come on, how many of you in here have ever had a three-minute conversation with Kim Maloney? And I was just like, come on Christina, she's funny. All right. Our STEPS program, still going strong in Special Olympics. Thank you for recognizing our student athletes tonight. Again, we did, we are the state champions in District Six. We have 35 athletes that are participating in Special Olympics this year, which is an awesome, awesome problem to have. Um, our A-team, we talked about that, they're here. We will be back in April. And I want to recognize Christian Richardson. He made a national cheer team and, uh, Christian is in his uniform. Wabonzi Valley, Warrior alum. And I want to recognize Coach Ryan Loetz, Coach Kendra Gill, and their three assistants. They take time away from their family and friends to be invested in Special Olympics and their dedication and effort shows from start to finish and after school. The one last thing I do want to, on behalf of, of us, is thank you for all you do for us. It's appreciated. We're grateful and we are the luckiest people in District 204. And I know people will fight me on that because it's a great place to be.
And with that, I just have one more, um, which is our future goals. We are not unaffected by the results of the national shortages on staff. So we will continue to work with HR to attract staff to special education positions and to fill staff vacancies. We will also continue to add supports at the building level for our diverse learners, including kindergarten readiness skills through post-secondary outcomes. So Student Services spans the entire gamut of the students that we serve here in District 204. And then our next, um, our next goal is really to look at all those curricular resources, some of which we had to, had to lead out during the pandemic, which was very difficult. We'd like to look at the fidelity of implementation. This is really the first time a lot of the students have, um, had those resources with a teacher in person and not by Zoom. And we'd like to look at, because we are always assessing whether these resources are working for our students. Um, and so we want to make sure that we're giving them with fidelity and so that we can reassess their, their level of, um, efficiency and to make sure that the students are making progress. So that's something we will be looking at, at the end of this year to look at progress and then move on forward with that. So with that, I'd like to open it up for any questions that you have for either Kim or I.
All right. Thank you. Ms. Fazdak.
Okay. Thank you so much for the presentation. The first thing I want to say is not directly related, but it's kind of. Um, this, I'm marking like just about 10 months in office and it has been a somewhat of a roller coaster for the last 10 months. And so my family and friends like to joke with me and say, aren't you so glad that you ran for the school board? And what I say is, but there's so much good stuff. And what I want to do is send people the recording of this meeting and say, I get a front row seat to all of this good stuff for the kids in our district, and I feel so lucky to be able to do it. Thank you for all that you're doing for all of our kids from preschool to STEPS. Thank you, thank you, thank you. It's amazing. So thank you for that. I do just have a few short questions. Are the assisted tech devices assigned like Chromebooks to kids? Are they able to take them home and use them at home?
They always can take them home.
Okay.
They go beyond Chromebooks.
Okay.
Sometimes they're, they're devices with a picture exchange system on them so that the student is not able to type, but will navigate through and hit pictures that make a sentence, and then they hit speak, and then it talks for them. And sometimes it's adaptations to the Chromebook, but we have a lot of different devices out there.
Okay, that's great. I'm really thankful we're able to provide students with some of that technology. Can you give me a little bit clearer idea of what you mean by capacity building with the RAP and the BCBA? Is it to support the staff member or is it to analyze what's happening in the student? I guess I just don't have a better, a full understanding of what that means.
Right, so because we only have seven people and we have 33 different sites, it would be impossible for us to say, well, let's give Christina 30 minutes a week of service from the BCBA. We couldn't tie them up because they'd be inaccessible then for the other buildings. So what we do is we, we build the capacity of the teacher, and we give her strategies and coaching and data sheets and do some modeling. And so they are building, you know, it's the teacher, teacher man to fish type of, you know, analogy is that we're teaching them, the teachers to fish a little bit instead of going in and just taking care of it. I'm sure the BCBA's could go in and take care of it, but that's not a sustainable model. So that's what I mean by building their capacity.
So we're sharing education even further.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's an ongoing PD.
Awesome. Thank you. I think, my last question is, are there any plans to grow the bilingual preschool program? And that may be something I need to direct to Principal Osborne later.
I think so. Yeah, I think Sally could answer that one.
Great. Thank you so much.
Ms. Dumbing.
Thank you so much for the presentation. And I just, I just have to say, the infectiousness is just palpable. I mean, I love it. I, it just, thank you so much for bringing that joy and that excitement. And I love how your, your community is just so supportive. And I just have to say, you know, thank you to, not only to your staff, but to the parents. As, as we were, as Christian was standing and one of his co-students was congratulating him, and you know, Christian was kind of, he turned and he kissed his mom. And, you know, and I saw that, and it just, so, parents, thank you so much for what you do because your children, and we see it all the time, but our children are watching in what we do for them. It means so much. So thank you to all the parents. But he did, that was the last thing he did before he sat down. And so, you know, as a mom, that just kind of like touches you. It touched me. So, so, so thank you. Just a couple of questions. You spoke about our out-of-district learners. Do we have an idea of what percentage are able to return to, to our, to our district that we're able to wind up providing services for or?
I don't have an actual percentage. I do know that every year we do return some students. It's really based on individual need. It's, it's such a unique decision. Parents, we, we never take anybody, we never offer that opportunity. And if a parent says, no, thank you, we don't force that issue. The student has to show readiness skills. And we, a lot of times we do like a half-day situation if we can do that with travel before moving to a full day so that it eases that transition. But it's, it's every year that we have students return, and it just really depends. It's, it's on everybody's individual timetable of when they're ready.
Got you. Thank you. Due process, can you help me with, what does that mean?
Sure. Due process is when the, the parent disagrees with something that the IEP team has decided or recommended, and the parent has the right to file for a hearing. And we always try to either go to what's called a resolution session or mediation session to work those things out.
Okay. And the BCBA's, do they cross, do they go across all levels? You mentioned how many, okay, so they may work with a student at the elementary in the morning and someone at the high school in the afternoon.
Yeah, they try, we try to be efficient with their time. So one of, like, one of them says, I'll take EC this year, and I'll do preschool, then I'll get to know all the teachers at a deeper level. So we're not always, you know, crossing paths and people having to work with different people. We do have two BCBA's who are assigned exclusively at the elementary level to our RISE programs, and those are for students on the autism spectrum, to give those teachers increased capacity with some of the behaviors they see. So we do try to put them in spots if we can. And then some BCBA's just go all over. It's just a referral basis. So it's a little different.
Okay. And then the last thing is just a huge congratulations on Slide 31. You were talking about the increase in percentage of your grant. And that was the, let's see, oh gosh, which?
That was Kim's, right? The increase in?
The DHS grant.
Yes. So, I mean, that is phenomenal. So.
It's the district vocational coordinator.
Congratulations and, and very nice job, great job. So thank you so much. That's all I had.
Ms. Grover.
I really enjoyed the presentation. I need some of Kim's enthusiasm there during the day. I really want to commend you and your team and staff how you find what is, what is the best fit for each student, whether it's in-house, in-district, PaySlab, working outside, making the lanyards. And I think that's really important because, like you said, each student, young adult, needs to feel valued and important. I, I do want to mention like the PaySlab, for instance. I know some families were wondering about that, well, will it, will the student be able to sustain the employment? And I think that was one of the questions I asked, and the PaySlab has done that. This, the student, I think you had mentioned, after the PaySlab, they've been able to maintain the employment after they graduated out of STEPS program.
Absolutely. That's a piece of it. It's a practical assessment, hands-on lab where we can take students that are at a job work site, for instance, and come in and practice some of the skills that maybe we need to get stronger at together. It's an opportunity for the case manager, PT, OT, and everyone to work collaboratively with that young adult to increase skills so they could be hired or so they can talk with a supervisor or practice interviewing or practice clocking in. It really does depend on the level and the pathway of our students that are there. Everything that our vocational program does, whether it's TeachTown, PaySlab, in-house work sites, out, just out of the building work sites, all of that is individualized and a team decision.
Right. The other question I have, and I think some of the other board members mentioned, is Slide 11. I wanted to understand, I still don't understand fully the RAP program. Is that something that the parents can ask for?
Usually, certainly we've given, and we can give RAP services to general education students' families. It's been primarily used up until this point primarily for, let's say, a family who has a student and they're new to special education and they don't have the structures in place at home. And so during the IEP team conference, the parent will usually say, like, I could use some help with, or they express some frustration or challenge. And then the, the team says, would you like someone to talk with you and set up some things at home? Are you open to someone coming into your home and having a conversation with you and setting up a plan? And some parents say, no, thank you. And some parents, you know, are, are very grateful for the help. And then the, she's a licensed clinical social worker, spends a finite amount of time doing that. We don't extend it for like a whole school year. Again, this is capacity building. We want to make sure that the family has the same kind of structures that work for us in the school.
So it's almost like the BCBA is to build capacity for the teacher and the RAP program is to build capacity for the parents?
Exactly.
Okay, got, got it. Okay, great. Thank you. Thanks, guys.
Ms. Jane.
Thank you so much for today. I've, I've learned so much with Ms. Fostick. I have to agree that these past 10 months, it has been such a roller coaster ride. But I will say one thing, one of the most memorable times for me has been visiting STEPS and interacting with some of the students and seeing what they were doing in the lab. I will never forget what I saw occurring in those rooms. And then I can see why with the energy of your staff, your students, and you. So thank you both for, for everything that you do. Just a few questions I had for Dr. Cipiel. Thank you so much for describing the role of the BCBA and all of the programs. I was curious to know whether, what the feedback has been from the faculty or the teachers with regard to the increase from three to seven of your BCBA. What, what kind of feedback are you receiving?
Usually we have to say, we need to share them. They, they would like them to stay longer. They would like them to do those things that sometimes their, their class, their class sizes and their, the shortage of TAs sometimes makes it difficult to do something like take data. And so they'll say, well, couldn't you send them in just to take the data? And, and we really can't. We'll build the capacity for you to take the data. So I would say that they are in, thought of in high regard.
High demand, yeah.
And, and they're very busy. They are, they are very busy. They also do all of our CPI, so our crisis prevention, the escalation strategies. They do the professional development for the entire district on that on a rotating basis. So they're, they're well-received anywhere they go.
Yeah, and I really, really appreciate the fact that the program is set up to empower the, the staff with the skillset so that the continued professional development. It's, it's really, really wonderful to see how you're setting it up. Do you anticipate needing or wanting or building that program?
If, if I had, if I had FTE to spare, that is where I would put my efforts. Just because the reason that, and more for Gen Ed students as well. I mean, we, we can certainly open it up, but that draws on our existing resources. But, but certainly that is coming back from a pandemic, especially behavior and regulation issues, expectations. Those are all things that are well within the BCBA's wheelhouse to, you know, instruct teachers on how to look at behavior differently and how to react or not react when things are occurring. So.
Yeah, and you know, that brings me to my next question about whether you've seen a need or emphasis of the skillset that, or the, what BCBA's provide because of COVID? Or do you, do you see anything unique about the needs right now because of the past two years? It seems like the test, the scores seem, seem to be in place, but just your reaction or thoughts about that?
I think it's especially, we're especially fortunate right now to have such a robust team of BCBA's. I just think that that's, that's just good fortune and, you know, who could, who could have foreseen this time period? So I'm glad they're there. But when we looked at, why do we, why do students leave the district? I mean, people move here for the special education programming. I know they do. And so when their children have to leave the district, we really like to reflect on that. And the number one reason is behavior. So we thought, where are we going to put our resources? It has to be into supporting behavior. And we can't, you know, we're, we're not, we don't have the structures and supports for all students, but how could we kind of attack this problem a little bit? And that's how we decided to move in that direction. And then, and then the pandemic came, so it was just good fortune. No one says the COVID was good fortune, but we were a little well, you know, more well-prepared than most.
Yeah, that's wonderful. Well, well, thank you for everything that you do. Ms. Maloney, I had a question about Slide 35. Let me see if I can get to that.
Can you tell me which one?
Yeah, let me, that was where you were mentioning how from last year, we had 12 students going out into the community, and this year we have 55 students. And I was just curious to know what, what might be the reason in the jump in numbers?
We, we changed scheduling with the block scheduling, and we have more transportation. The district has provided us with more transportation where we can get students out of the building more often. That's the reason.
That's great.
Some people will say, and Christina and I have talked about this a little bit too, with the pandemic and people not going back to work as quickly as they may have at a regular school year, there's more opportunities out there. And I would like to say that the staff and I have taken advantage of those opportunities also. But yeah, it's, it's fell into place nicely. It's a nice jump.
Yeah, that is, it's wonderful.
I also think that we had a lot of job sites shut down during the pandemic.
We did.
So the students that were once going couldn't go any longer.
Right, we did. Retail.
So once it opened up, then we were able to flood the system, which is great.
Right. Well, that, that is really, really wonderful to see. And I had just a couple of questions for, for regarding preschool. And I can certainly send it to Ms. Osborne. But one question was, with redistricting, would that impact the number of Title I preschools, classrooms that we offer?
So we do have preschool in our Title I schools, but it will not impact.
That's it. Thank you.
Mr. Krubas.
Just a comment and reflection, really. It's interesting to see over the last 10 years or so, the growth in the program. I remember when the school didn't, was barely acknowledged on the district website as a school. Didn't have a lot of links, didn't have a lot of information. And to reach this point of where we're at is incredible. Sometimes it might be, it seemed like a glacial pace, but it is improvement. And I, I love what I'm hearing and the direction. And then I look forward to us addressing some of the space needs of the program. I think that'll provide some more efficiencies and kind of improvements for all, including the staff and students. So I look forward to the school board focusing on some of that issue because I think that would benefit the program. We have challenges in the staffing area just with the market. But I think we have an opportunity to address some of the spacing issues, which will help the, the school. So thank you.
If, if you'd like to do like an Aaron Rodgers contract with people in the STEPS program, we could add him to the opening also. Jeannie, we can go back and put Aaron Rodgers contract for STEPS. Okay, please continue. It's getting late, I'm usually.
This is early for us. Okay, so first of all, I want to say I think that this board is lucky. And we're lucky to have you as leaders. We're lucky to have our students. And we're lucky to have our parents supporting the students. So add us to the list of fortunate people that really love and anticipate hearing your presentation every year because it usually is an uplifting, positive story. I was, I was really amazed at Slide 12 to 14 with the academic results. And I really thank you for, for all the work that you did to make that happen and during the times we've been through in the last two years. It's really remarkable and something that was unexpected when I saw it. So thank you so much for that. I, I also want to, Kim, I don't know who does your social media, but I see all sorts of pictures on Twitter. And I will tell you that that is always a feel-good moment for me, and I need that, right? And I really encourage everybody to connect on Twitter to the STEPS group.
They're only laughing because it's, it's every, it's all of us, so.
I mean, I see pictures every day and. I mean, I see pictures every day and I'm like, oh my gosh, another student is working or another smiling face or another success story. And I really can't say enough positive about doing that. And I, I hope you continue to make that happen. I, you know, I, this is a special set of students for us in the district to support and to, to meet their unique needs and desires. And I love the fact that you're inspiring them to, to reach, you know, goals that maybe they thought were unachievable or whatever and that you study carefully what is needed from the staff perspective, from the student perspective, and in their homes. Like that whole RAP program, I was not really aware of that even though I've been on the board for a while. So, but it's clear that you need all of those areas coming together to really be successful with these students. So I felt a little teary when you guys were talking. So thank you for doing that for me too because we, we do need to hear some really good things sometimes about what's going on in the, the district. So I don't really have any other questions, but thank you so much.
We should give a, it wouldn't go, it wouldn't be complete unless we gave a big, really recognition to our staff that came in during the pandemic. As soon as the buildings were open, they came in. Our related service providers came in, our teachers came in and they saw the students one-on-one because that was the safest way to do it. And I think that's why we have the academic, either growth or treading water situation, which a lot of students didn't even tread water during that time. So that's, I think, a big thank you to the staff for coming in. And they came in as soon as the buildings were open and continued to do so. So without them, that, that growth wouldn't have been there.
Right, and you were nurturing a population that we were extremely worried about. So, I mean, and we don't focus just purely on academics, but the, the whole surround of the child. So that was just one thing that I thought was, was really something I didn't expect to see. I also, ahead of time, asked you about the volume of students in the various programs that you talked about today. And it was interesting to note that the volume is about the same from pre-pandemic to now. So you, you do have, you know, a calling that people come to this district to be in your program. So, thank you.
Thank you.
I, I'd like to thank Dr. Cipiel for her leadership as well. She's provided stability across the board in 204 and, and the collaborative effort. So I think it starts with her and then filters down to all the different levels. So I'm not just being a brunnus, but thank you for, for what you do. I can do that on my own time, trust me. But I, I really, all jokes aside, thank you for, not only STEPS, but across the board.
All right, thanks.
Thank you.
All right, our last item is legislative advocacy and Board of Education update. And does anyone have any topics?
So the ISB proposals were due March seventh. So I submitted a proposal for our board regarding engagement to, on a panel for the November coming up ISB conference in 2023. We will know if we are selected at the end of April.
Sounds good.
And I wanted to thank Ms. Fostick and Ms. Jane for their help with that.
All right, I have nothing in this area to talk about today. So with that, we need a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn by Justin.
Is there a second?
Second, Susan.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we are adjourned.